So I'm gonna go ahead and turn the video on back here. Councilmember Willie, if you make it back up to the dais. And then let me check Zoom for Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Way is there. Excellent. All right.
Okay.
Okay. So folks, we are, we are back to item number 31 at this point. This is to consider the fiscal policy inventory and gap analysis final report. Our presenter from staff is Thomas Leung, our senior management analyst. And so, Thomas, please take item 31 away. Welcome. But unmute your microphone before you do so. Thanks.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll turn it over to Chelsea Ritchie from Moss Adams to present the fiscal policy inventory and gap analysis.
Thank you, Thomas, and welcome, Chelsea, as well as Colleen from Moss Adams.
Thank you. Well, I will begin us with the fiscal policy inventory and gap analysis. So starting on page one of the PDF, just kind of going over, you know, what exactly was the objectives of this report? We were determining whether fiscal areas were adequately covered by comprehensive current policy procedures. We identified policy gaps. And so this really included areas where there was no policies to support the fiscal functions as documented. Or if there was existing policies, really making sure, were they outdated? Or was there any minor updates or additions that needed to be added to those policies? Or, you know, just making sure there was no current internal control or gap coverage in those areas. And then lastly, we prioritized the gap, policy gaps based on overall risk. And with those overall risks, we developed an implementation plan to provide the city with recommendations for prioritizing and addressing the policy gaps. So with those objectives, how did we do this? You know, going back down to section B of page one, the procedures that we performed. So one was the fiscal policy and procedure inventory. So with city management's help, we developed a full listing of all of the finance and accounting policy areas that were really applicable to the city and that would be included in the scope of this project. And we documented, documented what those current policies had. And, you know, really identified the full inventory of results with management to really ensure that we were, you know, including all of the policy and procedure documents that should be included in this inventory. Second, we looked at a policy procedure gap analysis. So we assessed the current content of each area identified for potential gaps and coverage. We assessed if there was any existing policy and procedure documents for opportunities for improvement. And also, you know, overall content, you know, the flow and structure of these policy and procedures, if they really incorporated best practices and had internal controls implemented throughout the policies. With that information, we summarized the gap. If there was any gaps within those policy and procedures based off of best practices. And I didn't, we categorized significance and extent of those policy and procedures and gaps as full gap, major gap, or minor gap. And I'll get into that in a second. Lastly, when we talk about exactly what we did in this project, we prioritized those policy and procedures with those gap analysis into a work plan development. So based on the results of the policy and procedure inventory and gap analysis that we performed, we developed really detailed recommendations for the city that really used a roadmap for helping to develop. You know, if there was development or if there was amendment, or if it was just really just updating those policy and procedures. And then with also those gaps and those, you know, the things that we identified, we assign a risk level. So that means high risk, medium risk, or low risk. And you can see kind of below in the table on page two, you know, how we identified those risks. So if we thought it was inherently high risk, you know, what categorized that? And then our recommended phase or timing of when the, when the city should be.
Excuse me, is there supposed to be presentation slide or not?
No. So this is actually with your agenda. So if you look at the agenda with item 31, there will be the report amended to it. Sorry, and that's where I'm going off of.
Okay, thank you very much. Please proceed.
Thank you. So going back to page two of the PDF of the report, you know, we are identifying the risk level with the recommended phase or timing of when the city should be, you know, implementing these changes or, you know, updates to the policies and procedures. And then, you know, kind of going above that table, we talked about the full major or minor gap, which is really how we identified the policies, you know, throughout the fiscal, you know, the fiscal area for the city. So full gap mean that there really was no area, there was no existing documents in that area. Major gap, there might be some policy and procedures, but there was really major gaps. So there was major internal deficiencies in that area.
And Chelsea, I apologize for interrupting. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And I think the table that you're referencing is probably useful. I'll go ahead and indicate first the, the initial key, if you will, on page two.
Perfect.
You're talking, great, thank you so much. So the high risk, medium risk, and low risk is essentially the key you're talking about. Phase one, twelve months.
Absolutely. Yep.
Wonderful.
So we were really going over, you know, and if you go a little above that, Mayor Paul, there is, I was talking about the gaps identified. So this was the major, you know, area of our report. How we identified if there was a full gap, a major gap, a minor gap, or an updated gap.
Right.
So, you know, this really helped us prioritize if this was a high risk, a medium risk, or a low risk policy that needed to be updated.
And now I'll go ahead and scroll down to the table that you were referencing. And I made sure to check, I think it fits in the entire. Okay, there we go. Maybe just barely read. Okay, there you go.
Perfect. And so for anyone that's following along via, you know, Zoom or the agenda, this would be page four of the PDF. And so this is really kind of a high analysis of all the different areas that we identified within our fiscal policy internal gap analysis. And then, you know, it will show the type of gap that we identified and then the associated risk. And then with management's help, we were able to help, you know, prioritize if this was a level one, level two, or level three item in which the city really needed to help implement these policies and procedures. So below this, you know, really starting on page five of the PDF and, you know, below, we go into the summary of recommendations. So Moss Adams team really took these policies and procedures, you know, analysis, did an analysis on what was currently present in those procedures and how they could really expand and develop to make a full policy and procedure in each of these areas. So hopefully with our recommendations and the prioritization of the policies and procedures, the city can help implement these policies and procedures in a timely fashion.
So unless you want me to keep on scrolling down, Chelsea, I'll go ahead and stop the share.
That's perfect.
Okay, great. Oh, is there anything else in the presentation or should?
That is it. No, that is pretty much, I wanted to summarize our, you know, objectives and how we did this. You know, really the recommendations and everything I wanted to leave up to you unless there's anything that you want me as a city council to highlight.
Oh, okay, that's perfect. And so I'm assuming nothing to add from your, Colleen, before we go to members of the public? You're good?
I'm good.
Wonderful. So let's, per our usual practice, go to our members of the public. Again, this is item number 31. If you have any comments on the item, please feel free to raise your hand. You can speak on Zoom by raising your hand, or you can go ahead and fill out a blue card if you're live, or send an email to cityclerk@coopertino.org. I think I see one hand raised, but that's from our, oh, so Jean Bedore, you have a hand raised? So welcome, Jean. I'll remind every member of the public that if you want to speak, please speak. Please raise your hand in Zoom or email cityclerk@coopertino.org or fill out a blue card during the time that Jean is speaking. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening. Kirsten, could you put off? Thank you very much. My name is Jean Bedore and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. I'm speaking tonight to express my concern about the priorities expressed in this agenda item. The original Moss Adams Enterprise Risk Assessment Report, which was represented by this page two of that report, was an excellent overview of the overall risk to the city as a business enterprise. The highest risk was procurement and contracting, which is being addressed by adding a professional purchasing manager this fiscal year. The second categories were moderate to high risk. And these categories included, one, governance, two, external environment, three, human capital and resources, four, information technology, and five, planning and strategy. This agenda item regards projects for the next two fiscal years that are in the accounting and finance category. And this falls in the low to moderate risk category. This emphasis is not in the best interest of the city. This item, as well as item number 34, for fiscal year 2022, 23, internal audit program fails to address the moderate to high risk categories. In particular, governance and human capital and resources categories are problematic. Staff turnover is increasing and filling vacancies has been difficult. Please reevaluate the priorities for Moss Adams Internal Auditing to address higher risk categories rather than low risk categories. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Jean. And I see that Lisa Warren has a hand raised. And let me go to our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards or any emails that have gone into your inbox with regard to this item during the time that the first speaker was speaking?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so the next and final speaker on this item number 31 from the public will be Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I just want to add a comment. It was brought up earlier in the meeting. Basically, the great resignation, which has been happening over the last couple of years. It's a real thing. COVID has allowed people to change what they think about their future, et cetera. I'm just bringing that up because I don't think the high risk is necessarily attributed to anything done incorrectly by this council or members of staff who have been here a while, et cetera. And I, I could have stayed quiet, but I chose not to. So take it for what it is. I just am a little tired of some of this crap. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And we will go ahead and bring this back to council. And so I'll remind everyone of the order of our questions and motion making and deliberation. It will be in that order. If you have any clarifying questions of either our consultants from Moss Adams or staff, please ask them at this point. And then once council has asked its questions, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion from the dais so that we can commence deliberation on this item. So any questions? Councilmember Willie, I have a hand raised from you. And I'm looking around, I see Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. And so we'll go in that order. Councilmember Willie, questions, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chelsea. Nice, nice presentation on a very kind of technical topic. Technical, kind of dry topic, but important. I don't really have a technical question. I have something that, you know, a question that'll kind of help me to kind of understand where we're at. Of course, your, your findings are very important to us and we want to improve. So your findings are going to help to drive that. But in order to kind of keep things in perspective to me, I mean, you're doing this for a lot of different cities. How do you, I mean, with, when you go and do this process at each of the different cities, you come up with red, yellow, and green, and they have different topics in their respective categories. How do you feel Cupertino ranks amongst other cities? I mean, I think all cities are going to have some red, some yellow, some green. You know, kind of, can you give us kind of a, your feeling on where Cupertino is? And how, if we go and do make these changes, wow, how is that going to put us in our standings with, with other cities that you deal with? That would kind of help to put things in, in perspective for me. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. And so we'll bring it back to Chelsea without a microphone on. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. You know, I, when I think about, when I compare you to other cities, it really is uncomparable. You have to think about, you know, your major risks and where your, when you look at your financials, you know, what are the high material items of your financials? What are the things that really we need to look at? And so I think, you know, looking at other cities, you're very comparable. You know, unfortunately, much to my dismay, policies and procedures sometimes are, you know, kind of cast aside. But they are important. And, you know, when you talk about, you know, how, what is the city management doing to make this a high priority item? Or, you know, how can we, what are we doing to move forward to make this? So, you know, this is recognizable in the future. You know, I can already tell you that city management has been reaching out to our group asking, you know, for us to review policies and procedures. So they've already made, you know, updates to and, you know, developments too. So I think that's huge. And how does this affect the city? So, you know, really, when we think about your external audit, this is something that external auditors will look on on a regular basis. So having strong policies and procedures that show your segregation of duties, that show, you know, you know, what procedures are done, what reports are pulled at a designated time are so important. And, you know, having that documented really shows your external auditors, you know, and it really assures internal staff of what their jobs are. So I think, you know, going forward, city management has shown that this is a priority. And they're really willing to make this, you know, something that they make, you know, a plan going forward. I hope that helps.
Very much so. I mean, all I could say is, of course, the, the faster, simpler answer is, oh, you're in the top 10 percentile. You know, but I take what you said, you know, we're very comparable. And, you know, we get good marks for wanting to improve. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hey, yeah. Thank you, Chelsea. I think you have a way of speaking that makes things very clear. You have a very clear voice. However, on, right now with virtual meeting, council members do have the benefit of pulling up a PDF, but the public usually doesn't. So it's really helpful for us to be sharing the PDF as we are talking about them for the benefit of the public watching from home. So, yeah. And thank you, Mayor, for doing that. And I have a question about, it seems to this report talk about policy gaps. But I find out a lot of times organizations adopt policies, but they may not follow them. And that, this report doesn't seem to address that. Policies may be in place, but then people come in and then slowly it will be set aside and not really followed. How is that captured by your report?
Right. So, you know, our report is really looking at the policy and procedures as a whole. You know, so you're right. That is a great comment that you said, you know, and that is a risk, right? There is management that might not follow this policy and procedure. You know, but hopefully, you know, in, in the perfect world, we would see that, you know, with city councils back and, you know, top management's back, that, you know, internal staff really would take consideration of these policies and procedures. Now, when we looked at this fiscal policy and procedure inventory and gap analysis, we were really looking at the bulk of the policy and procedure. So not really ensuring that policies and procedures that were documented were completed. Our task was really looking at what the city really had on hand and then making sure that what they had on hand addressed, you know, segregation of duties, best practices, you know, that sort of thing, to make sure that the city was fully covered with a policy and procedure. That was the scope of this project.
Okay, so your, the scope of your, of your project doesn't really cover the case when actually internal implementation is not complying with existing policies?
That's correct. So going back, when I, you know, going back to page one of the, you know, report. So we were really looking at the fiscal areas. So looking at, you know, your financial statements, where there should be a policy and procedure, identifying, you know, what the city currently had. And then, you know, looking at the gaps and, you know, fulfilling recommendations for those gaps and the procedures, you know, that were currently, you know, that the city currently had as well as they currently should have had based off of their financials.
So take, for example, one item that's policy area grant management. Type of gap is full gap right now. What does that mean? Does that mean other cities for grant management, they have policies covering what that we don't have?
So, good question. So, you know, when you look at grant management, for example, so, you know, we base that off of the financials. So, you know, saying, okay, the city does get grants and this is something that they need to take in consideration with policies and procedures. And then based off of our expertise, you know, I hate to say it, everybody, but I used to be an external auditor. So I, you know, CPA, external auditor, I do know what needs to have, what those gaps need to be filled. So if the city has a material balance in grants management, you know, based off of best practices like the GFOA, stuff like that, this is really what the city should have when it comes to a grants management policy and procedure.
And that's in terms of complying with grant requirements so that we don't get audited by the people providing the grants, whether we are following their.
So it's based off of how the city, you know, internally is taking care of grant management. So how does a grant go flow through the city? As what, and that, you know, with that comes in making sure that you're in, you know, compliance with the CFR and making sure that, you know, your external auditors are, are, you know, thinking that you have sufficient segregation of duties when it comes to grants management.
Okay, so then.
And just very, very briefly, Vice Mayor, I want to do a quick time check just to make sure we're on track. We, we do have another five items. We're at 10:19, almost 10:20. So if you could wrap your questions within the next minute or two, then I'll go to Councilmember Way. I'm giving a little bit more time for the other council members that are not on the audit committee. Because Councilmember Warren and myself, we have more of an exposure to Moss Adams and, but to that point though, you know, please, let's try to be succinct. This is an informational item. And so I didn't realize when I spoke earlier that we don't actually need a motion. This is simply to receive the report. And so if you could wrap your questions in the next couple of minutes, much appreciated. Thank you.
So in response to the public's comment about why this was, this item was chosen as one of the priority item to work on, even though in the risk assessment table, it's considered low risk? Is there some misunderstanding about this category?
So I'll answer that one. Colleen Rosillas, I'm a partner with Moss Adams for the record. Policies and procedures is a moderate to high risk area. We identified in the risk assessment, we take an inventory of, of policies when we conduct our enterprise risk assessments. And we identified that there were quite a few policy gaps there. So that was a moderate to high risk area. It was an area that was also identified as needing assistance from administrative services, from the finance department, and from the city manager's office does wanting us to take a look at, because they really wanted to make quite a bit of progress with policies. You'll see that as well in our recommended internal audit plan coming up in a future agenda item. So that is a higher level item. It's actually pulled out of accounting and finance because we look at policies and procedures as a separate risk area. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And Councilmember Way, I'm sorry I misspoke. Actually, Councilmember Moore had her hand raised on the dais prior to your, your hand going. So we'll go to Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Way. And then I have a couple of quick questions. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. And thank you, Chelsea, for the report. I'm wondering if we, because this was a summary report, are, are we, or perhaps the audit committee, able to have a copy of the, the, the long form report? And the, the question is, because I'd like to see a little bit more information, for instance, regarding the item marked inventory, which says full gap. And I'm, and I'm wondering what that item actually entails. And, yeah. And, and also with regards to grant management, I'd like, I think that was a really good question from the Vice Mayor. And that's something that I would like for us at the end of the meeting to perhaps add on as a future agenda item to discuss the policies around, around grant management, where, that what the city council can, can provide. Because we do have, and maybe if you could talk about this a little bit with regards to policy, who generates the policies, what types of policies we have? Because there are internal policies and then there, there are things from the council. And I think it might help if we have that defined a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that's a great question, you know? So when we look at the prioritized policy and procedure work plan, which once again is on page four of the PDF that was presented in the agenda. So, you know, this was, all of these different recommendations were presented and given to city management. You know, for, we, we just highlighted the high risk areas just for presentation in the report. You know, when it comes to, you know, how is this different? So when we look at a fiscal policy and procedure, how does that differ from a city council policy and procedure? These are really internal policies and procedures that, you know, the finance department fiscally is taking into account when they are doing the financial statements for the city. So, you know, when we look at inventory, who is, who is recording what? What transactions are going through what? What reports are being pulled? So this really isn't a city council policy and procedure, but more of an internal city policy and procedure of how, kind of, how the financials flow and how they're made up. um and how they're made up, you know, to be represented to you all in um, you know, presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Moore, did you have a follow up?
Yes, I I do. It's unfortunately, it's trying to escape um me at this at the moment. Uh, give me a second, move on and I'll and I'll.
Okay, why don't we go to Councilmember Way, and then we'll go to myself and we'll follow up uh with you briefly. Councilmember Way.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So Chelsea, it's nice to meet you because um and and then Colleen too, because I wasn't in the Audit Committee, so I did not uh get a chance to see you. But I do have want to follow up with uh Councilmember Willie's question. It looks seems to me that a lot, you said our city is comparable to other cities. It looks like policy and procedures are sort of sometimes overlooked by its internal operations, right? It's like an internal operation book uh for the for the finance department, for the IT department to follow, so that when they have you know transit, they have other new people coming, they have policy and procedures to follow through. Is that an understandable statement?
You know, that's a great question. And I think based off of, you know, my experience and the many cities and counties and states that I have um encountered in my career, I do think that sometimes, you know, policy and procedures are thrown to the wayside. There's bigger fish to fry. Um, you have budgets to do and whatnot. Um, but I have to, you know, highlight that really policies and procedures should be an important part of the city's structure. Um, these really help define the segregation of duties. I know I'm a, you know, I'm a just a continuing uh recording here, but segregation of duties really need to be defined. And this is important for internal staff and your external auditors. As well as your internal auditors, this is something that we love to see.
That's great. That really answers my question. So this is somewhere we need to improve, but it's not, we're not, it's not unusual that this happens. And we're glad we're starting to do it. And follow up with Vice Mayor Chow's question. But we have, once we have policy and procedures set in place, is it internal operations that our city staff for them to follow and update it, you would say maybe every five years, every 10 years? So it's something that in it, it's not the city council approves that it's more for internal operations? Is that how you separate policy and procedures for um for this and policy procedures that is that the council makes?
Right. So I mean, I think I I said this before. So city management has already proactively come to us and said, we are updating these policies and procedures, which is a very healthy outlook for, you know, city council to look at. Um, sometimes we do these gap analysis and there's some stagnant water in between, you know, our presentation to you all and when management is finally able to get around to it. Management wants to make these policies and procedures happen. So I definitely think that, you know, that is a healthy movement, healthy um forward looking to look at. Colleen, is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I I was just going to confirm that um I've worked with hundreds of cities and counties um over about 20 years of this. Um, while your results aren't, you know, it's not great to see gaps in policies. It's very, very average to see gaps in policies. We're revenue constrained, we're staff constrained, you know, we've we've heard a little bit about that tonight. It's often the last thing on someone's list on a Friday afternoon, and then we have a fire drill or, you know, a call from a council member or a member of the public. And so it's very hard to make time to update a policy. Um, I would also note, you know, we we've built in into our internal audit work plan um a process for us to review draft policies from staff. Staff's very interested in making sure policies are best practice moving forward. I think that's a really positive step and a really good thing to think about in terms of really getting on a good consistent update schedule. When we have updated policies, another benefit um in addition to compliance is also holding your staff accountable, right? And that's something that's been a theme as we've been working with you all with this idea of we want to make sure that our staff are doing their work at a very high standard. And if we don't have those policies in place, then we're not necessarily able to do that because if we don't have any standards to to work with. And so if we've got really great policies in place, then we can all be assured that we're doing that work and we can build that trust together. And I think that's a really great value in having that.
So um, one last question is, um, I I do know that we have very, we have excellent external audits. So does that mean that, because I was reading your report very carefully, that this currently um our management answers, they are using, they're utilizing system security and non-formalized procedures for the process, but the policy procedures uh are not there. But they are following certain industry standards, because I understand our external audits uh on finance department is excellent. So do you have any answers for that?
Right. So you know, I think this is really enhancing policies and procedures to make City of Cupertino top notch. You know, looking at these recommendations, having these policies, you know, the procedures in place, this will really enhance in making sure that you are fully covered with those policies and procedures.
Great. So that's what I'm trying to get is, this is an ultimate goal is to invest in making improvements and increase our efficiency. But it really is not a indicator saying that we have really bad finance department, our staff is not working to par. I just want to make sure that we are working to enhance the government efficiency and effectiveness of the team, but we have a really good team.
Absolutely. I mean, and I think that all Moss Adams team can complement, you know, the people that we work with. And like I mentioned before, city management, you know, the finance department is proactively coming to us um multiple times a week with policies and procedures, hoping that we can review these and see if we believe that the recommendations and updates that they've made are sufficient.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And uh, as promised, I I had a couple of questions and then I'm going to be going back to Councilmember Moore. Um, and then Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised, but I do want to wrap this uh item uh in the interest of time. Um, and so we'll uh we'll stop at Councilmember uh Vice Mayor Chow's uh hopefully brief question. And then um Councilmember Moore has that follow up question after after mine. So I I I want to point out where we are in this context. Um, given the fact that I'm the only council member here that was here in 2018, when we initially in essence, started the process of procuring um Moss Adams ultimately. And so this happened uh in the middle of 2018. Um, and we had discovered a 14 year embezzlement. And so it took about four years for the city then uh after that was um, you know, that that was completed, so to speak. And the end of the embezzlement was shortly before uh I I was elected, actually. Um, and so um, I I I think maybe it was just right around that time, actually. And so um, we ended up, we ended up really being concerned about the financial you know, procedures with in our city. As the mayor back in 2018, I spent a lot of time with our finance department and Councilmember Way is absolutely right. We have a good finance department um with with people that are very responsive. They're very responsive in showing me the accounts payables and, you know, each of the items that uh we're we're expending. Um, and and so I was able to scrutinize that for the remaining months that I had um as mayor. And then, of course, uh, there was this transition at the end of 2018. Now, with regard to uh procuring the uh auditing services of Moss Adams, um, there has been some discussion with regard to the various types of categorizations. Um, one thing I would like to ask about to our Moss Adams representatives is with regard to the original reason for this entire course of action. When we're looking at policies and procedures and making sure that they're written and set, is there a connection between making sure that we have those commonly understood and thought out uh policies and procedures um and making sure that we have fiscal integrity within the city? And so, uh, Colleen or Chelsea, uh, feel free to uh address that question.
Yeah, I, so I think we we both, well, we're looking at each other through Zoom, aren't we? Um, so uh, I'll start. I think it is, it's one of the very, is the key areas where you want to have those safeguards in place to hope that some incident like this doesn't happen again, right? So you have strong policies and procedures, you train your team on them, you hold people accountable to those policies and procedures, you have preventive and detective internal controls. And all of those things together will help you to have a strong program that helps you to identify anything that might be kind of bubbling up, but also to prevent things from happening in the first place. And to create the perception, the perception is the number one way to prevent any fraud or future future instances from occurring. Um, to create that perception that we've got a strong program in place that folks aren't going to try it in the first place. Chelsea, is there anything that we want to add, having been an external auditor?
No, I think that's great. I think, you know, um, you know, really having that training and showing, having documentation of these are what we, the procedures that we have in place. Um, really as a city, the train, the documentation, having good people. That's really all you can ask for, um, you know, when you think of preventing something such as fraud.
Absolutely. And so um, let me ask my my second category questions. I I did want to kind of, you know, spend a little bit more time on this to take it more stepwise, but in the interest of time, let's get to the governance side of some of the comments that have been made. Um, let me just ask a very simple question. This exercise that we're undertaking with regard to policy and procedures, does that speak well of the governance posture of the city council? In your.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and I I I the fiscal monitoring of, you know, governance is so important. So to take a look at the policies and procedures that you have um and really just opening up that healthy, you know, look at what the city currently has, what gaps they currently have, what they currently are lacking is such a good part for you all. Um, really, when you're taking over that look of governance and, um, you know, fiscal monitoring.
And we're the elected representatives of the voters, and so it really does fall upon us to go ahead and motivate that type of action, does it not? If that's missing within our city. I mean, I know that you're saying that our, you know, I'll be a very excellent staff, is very cooperatively responding to you. But they're responding to you within the larger context of the fact that city council and the Audit Committee has made these efforts to go forward with making sure that we have the policies and procedures that we should be having. Is that correct?
That's correct. So you know, when we take a step back and we think of, how did this, you know, this project even begin? You know, that was a recommendation off of Moss Adams versus our, um, you know, our risk assessment. You know, and we brought that to the Audit Committee um for further review. There was lots of questions, you know, about that. And then we also brought that to city council. So really, you know, there has been many microscopes that have looked at, you know, is this an important project and why? So I think that, you know, there has been due diligence throughout.
Thank you very much. And and we're an extremely open council. As part of this process, um, we were amenable to the idea of uh surveying the city employees and asking them what their perspective was on what was, um, you know, the top level priorities. And that actually is one of the reasons why you do see governance. But just taking a step back from that, you have to realize that we're the elected officials. We're here to look over the taxpayer dollar. And so it is highly understandable. And if I were working for the city as well, I would say, well, governance, you know, um, this essentially is the taxpayer representative looking over the shoulder of what's going on internally. Uh, much to the point of policies and procedures being driven largely by our Audit Committee and our 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 council. Now, with regard to that survey, I I want to point out the fact that perhaps the largest complaint was the duration of our meetings uh at that point. One of the things, if you go back to your original you know, kind of survey answers, they said, well, these meetings sometimes go quite long. You know, these kind of governance issues, uh, we have these concerns. Now, um, I I will say, you know, having been mayor now again for a continual year and a half plus, one of the first things that that I did personally, and it was taken um completely with um welcome arms by the council, is I cut off the meetings at midnight and we have been successfully able to get through very complicated issues. Uh, the suite of um issues that we went through in June had to do with uh the budget, it had to do with the work plan, it had to do with the capital improvement projects. It had to do with grant management, uh grant program that we have going on. Uh, that's um, you know, evaluated by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And and so we managed to do that. We did continue the meeting. Um, but we have reined in that particular item. So would you agree with the idea that it is, it is not really accurate to say that insofar as the governed, the 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 purported governance issue uh or issues, if you will, um identified by your initial report, it hasn't been static with regard to uh the the city council's reaction? I mean, is that a fair statement?
So no operating environment is static. Um, I I absolutely could not say that. You know, we did this report in um the or the enterprise risk assessment in 2020 and we completed that in December of 2020. And a lot has changed in terms of the leadership team of the city since then. And then you also think about, you know, those of you on the council, many of you are, you know, kind of coming toward the ends of your terms and have a lot more maturity as leaders um as well. And so I think that makes quite a big difference, too. Um, the the challenge in terms of us, you know, I couldn't say tonight, like, oh, you're at a lower risk level. We have not gone in and done any kind of additional risk assessment there. But I do think there is some additional awareness also among this group of how we work together, right? How we collaborate, how we collaborate with city management. And I think that that is um evident in some of the conversations that I've had with you all over the last several months. And as we were working to put together next year's internal audit plan as well.
Thanks very much, Colleen. And final question before I hand this back over to Councilmember Moore. Do you get a sense in those interactions that uh city council is um is hesitant, is unwilling to listen to those concerns and respond and try to uh make adjustments as necessary in order to um respond to those uh concerns that can be uh adjusted or addressed i- in your experience uh with um, you know, helping out Cupertino over the last couple of years?
No, I, you know, I I I haven't worked with a single elected official who isn't, you know, willing to be flexible and responsive, right? We want to serve the citizens. Um, and sometimes we all just need um a reminder and grounding back in why we ran for office in the first place. And uh, and so and some, because sometimes we can get a little bit away from that when we get too many phone calls about dogs barking.
Fair enough. Well, thank you very much, Colleen. Let's take it back to uh Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor Paul. And actually, you you touched on an area that I was I wanted to talk about, and that was essentially what can go wrong if if these gaps continue to exist? And and when you, when you mention the um the the embezzlement, I think that covers it pretty well. So I'm I'm not going to belabor the point. I I think that's uh really helpful. Uh, I also really want to thank Moss Adams for providing this information and uh this this study of the the city processes. And we've um we've agreed with our previous budget that we just passed um to uh add a purchasing officer and uh another uh individual on on budget. And I think that's going to really help as we move forward and and essentially grow the finance department because it's been so small. And um, I think it was uh someone from your office that mentioned that, you know, Cupertino has grown and and where we need to um kind of grow some of these departments. And I think that your your guidance has been uh really helpful. I'm not sure uh with regards to um if you if you suggest a policy um improvement and it doesn't happen, um, if that if that issue has been um if you've reached something like that uh with our city, or are you finding that um they're very compliant and 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 what would happen if you had, if you saw something perhaps that you you're, you felt like it could be uh put us at risk for a a future embezzlement? What what would happen there if if perhaps you you six months down the road or a year down the road, you still don't see that a policy has been implemented? What what can be done?
Yeah, so you know, I think first and foremost, we have to remember that city management has already proactively coming to us, um especially with those high risk areas. And really, when we look at the high risk medium areas, those are the 12 to 18 months. Um, you know, another thing, so goodness gracious, that doesn't happen. And um, you know, we're not getting the policies and procedures. And when we look at the next audit, you know, looking at the next next audit um internal audit program that we can do for you all, that would probably be something that we would bring up to the Audit. internal audit program that we can do for you all, that would probably be something that we would bring up to the audit committee. Hey, um, you know, for example, uh, the accounting and financial reporting, financial policy and procedure hasn't been done. Um, we see major risks in this area because point A, B, and C. Um, you know, these are some areas, these are some procedures that we think that we can help. So we would definitely bring that up to the audit, um, committee if, if so, if that so be.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore, and thank you, Chelsea. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow and, uh, we'll have this close out the item. Um, and Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you. So, um, so besides the embezzlement issue recently, we also found out that the city has been making payment to an organization based on likely verbal contract or a contract that no one has been able to find. And then there has been payment of, um, like development of a website that has not been really approved by, we don't know what's the approval process. And people are questioning about that payment. And so could you give me example of the policies that should have been in place so that this kind of thing could be captured, um, in the future?
Yeah. So that is troublesome. I think, you know, the first and foremost one would be procurement. So making sure that, you know, any identified vendors are fully procured. That would be a major, um, you know, red flag area that hopefully policies and procedures could help with. Another, you know, huge issue would be accounts payable. So, you know, when we do these payments, how are they being processed? You know, and when you look at that on page four of our prioritized, um, policy and procedure work plan, these are both two high risk areas. So, you know, as a city of your size, Moss Adams has identified that these are two areas, you know, where inherently you will find risk. Um, and so I think those would be, you know, two areas that I would look at for those policies.
So could you include this case study in your future report? That, okay, the, in these policies, we'll be able to capture this case. Because we spent, uh, many council meetings to try and understand how it happened. And, but people involved have left. We don't know how it happened, but we would like to prevent it from happening, right? So I wonder if your report could include some concrete things that could help us understand how good policies actually will help.
And Vice Mayor, I think that's a, a great question with which to, uh, wrap up the item. And so let, let me go ahead and, uh, bring this either to Colleen or Chelsea. Colleen, I see that your microphone is on. Did you want to address?
Yeah. So the next step for this is, is for staff to start updating policies and for us to review them. And, um, and our recommendation would be, you know, you start with those highest risk areas. Those are related to these areas that Chelsea named. Um, and then the next piece would be for those higher risk areas for us to work on building out our internal audit work plan to start doing some more testing of those areas and look at the controls around those areas. So if we feel like as we build out our program for the following fiscal year, once we have policies in place that we want to do testing of those areas, those would be, that would be a really good next step for this process to make sure things are being followed, folks are trained, that we've got the appropriate controls in place.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Colleen. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and, and close this. This is a great topic of conversation. We actually have a whole suite of fiscal stewardship and responsibility type items. And, uh, I, I suspect that, um, our, uh, guests tonight from Moss Adams are going to be around for at least, uh, another one or perhaps two of them, uh, or, or more. And so let's go ahead and consider this, uh, report received. Uh, great input, great questions. Appreciate, uh, all of it. And so we'll go on to item number 32. That is the consideration of the capital program effectiveness study final report. And the presenter as listed on our agenda is Thomas Leung as well. And so Thomas, uh, did you want to kick off this, uh, item or provide a presentation? Or, or, you know, reintroduce our presenters here?
For this item, I'll hand it off directly to Annie Rose Favreau from Moss Adams to give the report.
Okay. Welcome, Annie Rose Favreau from Moss Adams.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm Annie Rose Favreau. I'm from the Moss Adams team. And I'm here to give just a quick overview, especially in the interest of time, I'll try and be, um, quite brief here. But an overview of the capital improvement program assessment that we performed. And for that, I think I'll go ahead and share my screen just so that we can follow along on the executive summary. I will bring that up now. And you should have the full report as part of this package as well. So within this context, what was this whole project about? We wanted to look at the capital improvement program, specifically looking at the CIP division. This is the team within the city that's really responsible for all of the city's capital improvement projects, activities from start to finish. So starting with planning, thinking through what are our needs, how are we putting those together? How are we communicating those needs out through the actual design, construction process? And then finally the end reporting as well. And so for this assessment, we took a pretty broad view. We wanted to look at people, processes and systems in general so that we could figure out where is there room to improve the efficiency of this work or improve the effectiveness of this work? And so we did this assessment between October 2021 and February 2022. And in order to inform this assessment, we did quite a few interviews. We over, we interviewed over 20 members of staff. We did an extensive document review as well, looking at planning documents, reporting documents, how information is shared, what are the policies and procedures within this team? What processes are written down, that type of thing? And then we also compared current practices against best practices, uh, from the industry as a whole. So within that, I, I think another sort of piece of narrative context that is important is to recognize that this division has gone through quite a bit of, um, turbulence in the last little bit. There's been significant staff turnover. But one of the narrative pieces that we really heard quite strongly when we were doing interviews, especially when we were interviewing partners, um, other departments across the city that actively work with this division, is that they're already in this forward motion into making progress to make things more efficient and effective. That's the work that this division was already really tackling. And so we see this assessment as an opportunity to have an outside eye to help point them in some directions and then just complement the work that this team is already doing, um, to really improve the, this area of operations. So when we were going through, and I won't go through the whole report, but just to give a quick summary of some of our primary observations and recommendations, we broke them into three categories. The first was planning and prioritization. How are we actually planning and thinking about the capital improvement projects that come into the city? The second topic was people. So that's things like staffing levels and organizational structure. And then the final topic area was processes and systems. So within planning and prioritization, we had three observations here. And really the two primary ones are these first two, and they relate to long-term planning. Right now, the city is primarily using an annual CIP budget process to set what are going to be our priorities for the next year in terms of where we're spending, where we're investing city resources into capital improvement, um, projects. In terms of best practice, it's typical to see cities develop a long-range CIP plan as well. A plan that would cover a five to 10-year period and essentially lay out, here are the major projects that we believe will be coming up for us. And some of that might have to do with maintenance. If you know a building is going to be needing significant, um, renovations, for example, or a full rebuild. And some of this might be new projects. And so we see those documents, they're often very flexible, but it's good to help get everyone on the same page of understanding where are we trying to go in this area of work? And what are some of the really key considerations that are coming up for us? In complement to that, we have observation number two, which is that the city has not yet developed a financial forecast, um, that could be paired with this type of long-term plan. And so again, the recommendation here is really around developing that multi-year financial forecast so that you can start to understand, not just for the current year, but future years out, especially for projects that are going to require significant investment. What are the budget implementations actually going to be for that? What are the things that we should be proactively planning for? So those are just the two I wanted to highlight in the planning and prioritization section. Then moving on to the people section, we looked at the CIP division itself to understand their current staffing and current workloads. And we made several recommendations here to really build the capacity for this team. And I would say the primary, the most critical piece, uh, that we had here was hiring additional support for the senior management analyst within public works. That role really supports a huge amount of work within the division and then across the entire public works department. So hiring backup for that was a critical first priority. We also have some recommendations here around beefing up the project management roles. And then finally hiring a grant management position that could support all of city operations. So that's something that came up because CIP is obviously an area where there is a lot of available grant funding. So having additional grant support would be fantastic for this team. But also we recognize that that's true of many areas within the city. So the recommendation is really to have that, um, citywide support through that position. And then the last area I want to talk about is processes and systems. I won't dig into all of these, but in this section, we looked at policies and procedures and noticed that there were some gaps. And, and obviously when there is a lot of turnover on a team, policies and procedures become very important so that staff have a guide to perform work consistently. We also looked, um, a little bit at the procurement function within that. And many of the results that we found here were very similar to what came up in the 2022 procurement operational review. So we've also tied those two pieces together in this report. We looked at the systems, the technology systems that are actually being used by the team and found that there is a pretty significant gap in terms of the systems that were available to the team and what the team actually needed in order to efficiently be managing these very complex projects that also have complex budgets attached to them. And so the recommendation here, I believe work is already underway on this to develop an in-house, um, system solution for that. And so just continuing that effort. And then the final area we looked was around communicating progress, um, sharing information out. We know that in the past, there has been some challenges around really understanding what are the city's CIP needs? What are the trade-offs if we choose to pursue one project over another? So we made some recommendations here around developing a more robust annual CIP report that can really focus on the project progress that you have here and better communicate some of the opportunities and challenges that are coming up for the city as a whole. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen here. I just wanted to give that brief overview and turn it back over to you all to see if there's any, um, comments or questions.
Thank you very much, Annie. And so at this point, we will go to our members of the public. And so if you are a member of the public and you'd like to speak on this item, uh, please raise your hand in Zoom or you can fill out a blue card, uh, live or email our city clerk at cityclerk@cupertino.org. I don't see any of the hands, uh, being raised in Zoom at this time. Uh, Madam City Clerk, do you have any blue cards on this item? Um, and I, I guess I'll ask you, uh, again in a moment as to whether any emails have come in uh, with regard to this item number 32, I believe, on our agenda.
No, Mayor, we have not received anything.
Okay, uh, very good. I, and I also don't see any hands raised still in Zoom. So, uh, let us go back. Any emails that have come in during this period of time?
No, no emails.
No emails. Okay. Uh, very good. Uh, so I, I do want to say that this is a, a really, you know, personally, you know, with, uh, seven and a half plus years on, on council, I find this really exciting. I, I think that this is a really good, um, uh, this is a, a really good way to communicate, uh, some things that are extremely important to our city. The capital improvement, you know, projects are, are, are things that, you know, affect virtually every corner of our city. And, um, all sorts of really great things are happening. But at the same time, all processes can be improved. And so, you know, pointing out things like the way that we make updates and, you know, how we communicate and, and these various items internally that we wouldn't necessarily have too much of a good optical look, you know, from the public or from council. Uh, this is the perfect mechanism to, you know, get that, um, understanding. So much appreciated. Um, and, you know, I'm really, you know, appreciative and respectful of my council colleagues for, you know, pushing this over the course of the last couple of years. And, and so this is a, a nice window into it. So I see hands raised, um, from Councilmember Moore and from Councilmember Way. Let's go to Councilmember War, Moore, uh, with any questions or comments. We'll wrap these in. Um, this is an informational item. And so let's go ahead and, um, you know, try to, uh, be succinct. Let's go ahead and, um, let me allocate three minutes at this point for anyone who wants to ask questions or make comments on this. Councilmember Moore, and then again, Councilmember Way.
Okay. Um, thank you, Annie, for the report. Uh, it's great. Uh, we, we did see it at the, the audit committee. Um, one thing I particularly appreciate is the long-range CIP plan. And, uh, this, this year we did, uh, do prioritization of the plan. And, uh, I agree with having the, the, both the short and the long term. We really need to do that. Um, with regards to grant requests, there was something kind of recent that, that, that came up. And that was, um, that there were some requests from our, our city manager to our local assembly member, um, for, for, um, uh, budget requests. Uh, and what happened is that, um, these letters were sent and we did receive a grant for, for a project, a, um, that we, seven and a half million dollars was requested. Uh, we received the grant for a project which, uh, we didn't know, um, uh, was on the horizon. It was a, it was a bridge, um, replacement. And, uh, so there's, there's something with our, within our policy or our procedures where we weren't, um, made to know that this bridge needed to have this work done on it. Um, and so that it came as a surprise and it was something we don't really want to have is that kind of a surprise. But there was also a request which we did not receive the funding for, which was a $9 million fiber network. Um, and so having not heard of either of those, those items, um, perhaps there's something that, uh, you can suggest with staff for a policy that, um, that council can have with regards to, um, the, the grants and keeping, keeping us, um, on top of these, uh, projects and whether or not there are other ones moving forward. I think that would really help. But again, thank you for the report. It's great.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, for the context and the questions. And, uh, Annie or, or Colleen, did you, uh, want to speak to some suggestions here? I mean, it's always great to have money, right? Uh, but at the same time, it's really nice to be informed as to what, uh, the needs are in, in the city. So thoughts on that, you know, comment and question?
Yeah, absolutely. I have, I have three different thoughts. The first of which is within capital improvement, this world, stuff like this does come up where suddenly you have a shift in focus because you have either funding or a really significant need that you didn't know. And sometimes that does just happen. So I do want to acknowledge that part of that is just how, how that can go within the space at times. However, that being said, I do think that there's two recommendations within the report that would really help address that. Part of that is around the regular reporting, hearing regular feedback from this team and having the, um, the full CIP plan, that long-term plan, I think will be really the space to help start identifying some of those longer-term needs that maybe aren't going to come up in this fiscal year. But then all of a sudden, something pushes it into this fiscal year. But that would give you the insight and the transparency into some of those upcoming projects. So I think that would really be beneficial, um, in terms of communication for this group. I also think having that centralized grant management position. Obviously, a single person is not going to, um, manage all of the grants within the city. But instead, that role can really be someone who can help tie in and report out on grant activity, help coordinate that across the city and help build capacity for teams that are managing multiple grants in terms of what are the expectations around communication, for example. So I think between that combination, I think that would put you in a really good position moving forward.
Thank you, Annie, and, uh, apologies, Councilmember Moore. Let's go on to Councilmember Way and then Vice Mayor Chow. Uh, that was a, a few minutes. And so if there's a little bit of extra time, we can go ahead and, um, perhaps do another follow-up. You, you don't? Okay, great. So Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, I think Councilmember Moore touched, uh, the two, two questions and the answers are right there. I'm just going to repeat it and you tell me if I misunderstood it or I'm right on target. The long-range plan, that is what are really important because we probably would have known the bridge if it's on the long-range plan. We won't know it year by year because our, we're doing a year by year thing, as you said. So once we have that long-range CIP plan, I think none of them will come as a surprise. And also to have that procedure with that, um, the long-range CIP plan plus a standardized project prioritization process, I think we really need that. Cause the two years I'm on council that are going to CIP, we struggle with prioritization. How, what standards do we do? Is this some, some, some council member's pet project? Or is it, does it conform to our long-range plan? So I think your two recommendations will really fix what we're having right now. Would you, um, Would you support that or are you going to add something to it?
I think that that's just right in terms of saying, I think that long-range plan, that's the goal, is to provide that transparency with the only caveat being, I am not familiar with this bridge project, so I absolutely can't speak to that. And there are always things that do come up, but you can deal with one or two things that are coming up that are totally new if you have that broader context around where are we headed in general as well.
Just one more quick question, Mayor Paul. How do we start to do this? How do we implement it?
That's a great question. And I know that we do also have some staff members on deck here, so I want to also defer to them if they want to speak to that comment question as well.
Thank you, Annie. And I see that our camera's turned on by Director Morley. And Matt, did you want to speak to that question about how we, you know, start this process?
Yeah, and so as, as I was leaving my former employer, I was just finalizing a long-range unfunded needs list, a list of projects that were outside of the capital improvement program that would ultimately fold into that program. And so I think there's some good strategies. We've got some things in play already. We've got a facility, a condition assessment that will provide us with a 15-year outlook on facility needs. So that will be helpful when that one's concluded, and that could be a good springboard for including other items like bridges, roadways, parks, that kind of a thing. Takes a little bit to build these. There's a lot of work to do, doing it, but we've got to get started, and I think the facilities is a good point to start. So without taking too much of your time, I think we're headed in the right direction here.
Wonderful. Great input. Thank you so much, Director Morley. And Annie, anything to add before we move on to Vice Mayor Chow? Okay, great. So Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, thank you. A very good recommendation about the long-term plan. In fact, when I first got on the council, I remember I looked at the CIP plan. Usually, there is, here are seven lists we recommend adopted. And, and then I pushed to ask for a list of unfunded projects, but then we should eventually get to because we did do a lot of facility assessment, what needs to be retrofitted, what needs to be. Finally, I got that list, and then next year, that list is gone. And then finally, this year, we had 14 on the list that's considered and then recommended seven. That's better, but still, we don't have that extra list. So I think we really need a policy so that I don't need to keep asking every year the same question, where is that other list? And then, yeah, we were surprised by this McClellan Road Bridge. We are delighted we got funding for $5 million, but I don't know if this bridge actually might cost $50 million. We got $5 million, does that mean the city have to pitch in the other $10 million? I have no idea because that's not a project that's even on the other list, that's unfunded list. So we need, the council even need that for bigger picture. And we, and, and also that the city had gone through another thing is also, we, the staff went ahead and got a half a million dollar grant from ABAP, which is a great thing. However, the scope of that project that's proposed is different from the council had in mind in our adopted plan. We had a much smaller scope in mind. And as a result, we couldn't accept that grant because first of all, we were informed the one year later, we got the grant, not right away. And as a result, we couldn't accept that because of this miscommunication. So if we can have better buses so that in the future, we have, bet we keep the council, when going out for grant, it has better, it's something that align with the council goal, and then the council is kept in the loop for what will be the total cost of, of the project, even with grant funding. If, so if your recommendation could help to fix that, that would be great. Another thing I want to ask is, your report actually says the city's CIP team is sufficiently staffed to meet the needs of its current workload. It's only that it's now staffed to provide backup for key roles. Then for those that we rely heavily on certain individual or institutional knowledge. So could you, but then you mentioned earlier, something different. You mentioned, so is that, change it?
Okay. So we'll just.
Great clarification.
Sure.
How should we provide this backup for essential knowledge?
Great. Thank you very, very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And so I hate to cut you off because your, your comments, as with all your colleagues, are so, you know, enlightening and insightful. But let's go ahead and refer that to Annie and perhaps our, our staff members if they care to speak to those comments and questions.
Yes, thank you for the clarification on the staffing question. One of the key pieces of that was that there were two temporary project manager positions that at the time of this report were, were temporary. And so what we were saying was, at this current staffing level, including those temporary positions, you are at an adequate staffing level. And then there's some additional support needed for some of the support around that management analyst. So that, that might be the distinction that you're seeing in those two recommendations. And then I also just want to comment, it's so great to see the energy from this group around the idea of a long-term CIP because staff can't do this without all of you being on board with this as a concept, being willing to invest resources into this. So this is fantastic that this group seems to be really having a positive outlook on that because I think that'll be a great partnership between council and staff in this area to really, and management in this area to make that happen.
Great, thanks very much. And Councilmember Willie, and then I just have a very brief comment and perhaps a question. Councilmember Willie.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Annie, once again, thank you, as the other councilmen have, have all said, thank you for a nice presentation. Of course, I like improvements in CIP projects, you know, while that's great, but then improving our, our processes. So your input, I find, you know, very important, very enlightening, gives ideas on what I would hope we, we improve upon going forward. Like I say, CIP, I think, is pretty important for the community and long-range planning. Yeah, I think we definitely need it, the Parks and Rec Master Plan type thinking. Make sure we know where we're heading. What things do we feel we should really be, you know, creating or improving for the community? I also do like our current CIP process where we really are looking at it on a one-year increment. Some of the projects are, in fact, two-year, three-year, four-year projects. And yet, I feel, you know, we're truly looking at them, you know, as a one-year increment. Okay, what are we doing this, this year for this next 12 months? And I, I do feel that there is some validity to that for a community that's our size, for the number of projects that we have, the size of the projects that we have. I think when you look at San Jose or San Francisco and changing the, the way their, their downtowns are, I mean, those are, are, you know, not five-year projects, but those are 10, 20, 30-year projects. And I think that goes beyond our small community. So, so kind of a hybrid where we, we are doing pretty darn well with our current thinking, but if we could incorporate some more of the, the long-term. The one that I've kind of always kind of focused on that I wish we did do more of a long-term, we have so much interest in bike ped projects, especially these days with climate change and stuff. And yet, when we are doing what I previously said, looking at projects just individually, oh, this project, this many dollars, this project, this many dollars, as opposed to, I think, a longer-term approach would help and kind of assign it a run rate. Let everybody know that we're not just jumping from project to project, but we have a run rate of, say, $4 million a year for bike ped projects. And then as some projects finish, the other ones are already staged and ready to, to be moved on, so we really do keep continuous. There truly can be periods where we go from, say, $4 million to, to $6 million and other, other years where it drops down to one or two million. But I think that would give a little bit more consistency in terms of a build-out and creating these, these improvements for the bike ped. And maybe there's a couple other Parks and Rec type things for the master plan that could benefit from the long-term. But overall, I'm listening very attentively to your suggestions and hope that we do, do everything we can to improve our processes. So, so thank you for spending the time and, and helping us on this. And I'll give it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And let me refer to our outside consultant as well as anyone from staff. Did anyone want to speak to Councilmember Willie's comments briefly at this time? Okay, so, so let me, let me just say, I think it's been an excellent suite of comments from, from colleagues. The one thing I'll add, and if anyone wants to speak this, feel free, we really value public comment, and I'm sure, you know, every community does. But I think one of the things that we could have some help with is a lot of times, you might see, you know, particular advocacy happening, right? And, and I think it's just a natural human tendency. If you build these relationships with staff members, right, and you're talking, there might be this tendency to go, oh, this sounds like a good idea. Why don't we just kind of frontburner this? And, and, and I think it might just be really just, you know, kind of a natural, you know, sort of tendency. So my, my overall prognosis on this is just looking very deeply optimistic at it. I, I think there are a lot of various elements that have improved vastly over time, even, you know, extremely recently. One of the things I just, you know, there, there is a phenomenon known as back-channeling, and I don't want to, you know, kind of turn it into, you know, kind of a finger-pointing exercise, but I know, I know people have that kind of, you know, usage of that specific terminology, but at the same time, it is absolutely true. We need to take an input. So let's do it in a fair manner, a consistent manner, and to the extent that we can get assistance with regard to, you know, how we achieve that. You know, and, and again, I think our, our current staff is doing just this wonderful job. If you look at the BlackBerry Farm outreach, if you look at the Jolly Men Park outreach, if you look at the, you know, Lawrence Midi outreach, it's, it's been really positive. But I can see it kind of ebb and flowing, just, you know, based upon, you know, what particular project you're talking about, what particular, you know, staffing you have. So, so if we can have that kind of attention paid to that aspect of it in your undertaking at this point, that would be much appreciated. But if there are no comments on it, I'm happy to close out this particular item. And so I don't see any further hands raised or microphones turned on. So let us go to item number 33 on our agenda. A quick time check, we're 11:17, we have four items left. There, three of them are also financially related. One is related to a selection of our councilmembers to serve on the City Hall Project Subcommittee, which is the last item. And so Hope Springs Eternal, I don't know if we can get to all four of them, but let's go to item number 33. That's the consideration of establishing a fraud, waste, and abuse program and conducting a first reading of an ordinance amending Municipal Code Section 2.88.100, which has to do with Audit Committee duties, powers, and responsibilities. I see that the presenter is also listed as Thomas Leong. And so, Thomas, did you want to kick off this item number 33 for us?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is a proposed ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section 2.88.100, which is Audit Committee duties, powers, and responsibilities. In fiscal year 2021, as you know, the Audit Committee and City Council approved an internal audit program, internal audit work program, which include, which included fraud, waste, and abuse. In conjunction with staff, Moss Adams has developed a fraud, waste, and abuse program, and the draft program description is included in your agenda packet. A fraud, waste, and abuse program is a mechanism for employees and members of the public to report activities that are perceived as misconduct, violations of city policy or ethics, theft, waste, or misuse of city assets. The objective of a fraud, waste, and abuse program is to identify and stop the loss of city resources and also act as a deterrent to fraud, waste, and abuse. The fraud, waste, and abuse program will be available to all city employees and the public. The program operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Reports of inappropriate activity can be made using the city's hotline or by mail or in person. All reports submitted are treated confidential, confidentially. The fraud, waste, and abuse hotline will be administered by a third-party vendor, and the vendor receives calls on the hotline and then forwards reports to the city's internal auditor, Moss Adams. To improve transparency and provide oversight of the fraud, waste, and abuse program, the internal auditor will prepare quarterly fraud, waste, and abuse program reports, and these reports would include statistics of calls received by the hotline or by the internal auditor, as well as summaries of completed investigations of fraud, waste, and abuse. And so the city's recommended action is to adopt an ordinance to expand the Audit Committee students. The proposed ordinance would amend Section 2.88.100 to include an additional duty to review quarterly fraud, waste, and abuse program reports. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Thomas. And so let us go to our members of the public. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this item number 33, please either raise your hand in Zoom or fill out a blue card live or send an email to our city clerk at cityclerk@cupertino.org. While you're contemplating that, I don't see any of these mechanisms invoked here, and I'll confirm that with our city clerk. Are there any blue cards on this item, Madam City Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so let's go ahead and bring this over to the dais. If I see any hands raised, I'll go ahead and call them in the next minute or so. But in, in effort to, I, I don't anticipate this is controversial, but let's go ahead and call on Councilmembers Moore, Councilmember Way, and then Councilmember Willie has a hand raised as well. Councilmember Moore, did you have any follow-up questions or comments on this item?
Just a brief question for Thomas. So what would happen, because these are quarterly reports? So let's say, you know, something happens in January, but the report doesn't come out until March, and it really needs to be addressed. So is, what, what can be done so, so that we don't, if, if there is a serious problem going on that we're not, because of the, for the virtue of the quarterly reporting that, that, that item would be handled in a more timely manner?
Okay, how do we do this more timely if it's a quarterly report schedule? Thomas or someone from Moss Adams, do they want to, any, any one of you want to address this question?
I can go ahead and answer that. So just because the reporting to the Audit Committee is quarterly doesn't mean that our responses are quarterly. So calls and reports come into these hotlines at all times. They're, they're operated 24/7. They're either online, by mail, or by phone, as Thomas mentioned. They come in, they can be anonymous. Most of the reports are anonymous. We follow up with them immediately. If it is something that needs to be investigated and is a matter that, for example, needs to be an internal audit engagement, we would engage with the city either through the Audit Committee or through the city manager's office to do an attorney-client privilege internal audit engagement, to do an investigation. Sometimes there are issues that we hand right over to the city attorney's office, or it's a police matter that gets handed over, so that happens immediately. Most of the issues actually do not rise to the level of actually being that level of investigation, and it's often an HR matter or something that a department head or the city manager can handle, and those are things that are dealt with. And we stay on top of them and make sure that they're resolved, and that's what comes out in the quarterly report. This is how many reports there were. Here are the nature of the reports. Here are things that might still be under investigation. Here are the things that were resolved.
Thank you very much, Colleen. And thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we go to Councilmember Way.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and then I have some comments. There are different terms used in the report when I was reading. It's FWA hotline, fraud hotline, ethics hotline, are they the same one hotline or they're different hotlines?
Same hotline.
Okay, because I was a little confused when I was reading it. And one particular sentence I need clarification is hiring or promotion based on personal relationship, known or unknown. If unknown, how does that corruption apply? I'm a little confused on that. on this definition.
That would refer to if the relationship was known or unknown by the city. So if the relationship was disclosed by the person who was doing the hiring.
Okay, so it's known or unknown by the city, not by the person?
Correct. Yeah.
Oh, okay. So I was confused on what, okay, so, okay, here's my concern. I have one other question. How many other cities have this hotline?
Um, I couldn't tell you, I mean, out of all cities, I couldn't tell you. Every one of our internal audit clients has a fraud, waste, and abuse, or whistleblower, ethics hotline, whatever they call it. It's a best practice in local government. It's also just, in general, a best practice in terms of, as I mentioned before, that detecting fraud, but also that perception that leads to preventing fraud. So it's not just putting it in place, but also training staff on it. Folks know that it's available and there, and it's a very important preventative control.
Okay, so, okay, that's great. So my next question is about implementation. So if I understand that phones, everything comes to you, an outside agency?
So there are, it's a third-party vendor, not us, that receives the calls, and then it comes to us for that triage of, is this, are we going to investigate this? Is the, you know, an issue of, sometimes people get a hold of the number, and it's, you know, my credit card was stolen. That's not a matter for the hotline, for example. Is it an HR matter? Is it worth an investigation? That sort of thing.
Okay, so my next question is, anybody could call, right? It's just not the staff? It's any residents, anybody could call? And for residents, or even me, to understand all the municipal codes and everything, so a lot, so some, from your experience, some, maybe a lot of calls are not real issues, or?
Yeah, you know, I would say that the vast majority are not highly relevant. But there's not also a ton of activity on these, right? As I mentioned, it's really a preventive control, and it's there for the people who need it when they need it. What we often see when they're instituted is there's a big bump right at the beginning of folks, as it, as it kind of gets online and people know about it, people will call. And then once it's in place and folks are used to it, then it becomes kind of part of the city's culture, and it's used for its intended purpose. So we are used to getting that kind of initial bump, and then it becomes used for that routine, actually what it's for.
Okay, so on the reporting, so I'm a little concerned on the Audit Committee taking the, so they're not taking the calls, they don't know the NAMS or anything. The reporting is more statistics, right?
Correct.
Because Audit Committee members change, you know, so maybe the Audit Committee is just getting the statistic out to report back to the council, to the public.
We want to maintain confidentiality for those who have reported. And it's very important in that public document discoverable environment that any investigation that does occur is done in collaboration with the city attorney's office so that we can maintain that confidentiality. So yes, any report is just about the statistics and very high level, and is not into the details.
Yeah, so what really concerns me is if somebody reports something which is not true, but the NAMS would never be named, the NAMS be leaked out, and then, you know, because if Audit Committee or staff knows about it, and then, you know, by accident, NAMS could slip, that, that's what something would really worry me. Okay? And so the confidentiality part of it, how can you guarantee, oh, maybe not guarantee, but make all precautions to make sure that before any results comes out, these are confidential information, the NAMS are not named. So does the Audit Committee, do the members know the NAMS or the content? Or what's the real implementation process?
No. All of the investigations, all of the actual procedures occur on our side. The Audit Committee only learns of the activity on the hotline, that statistical activity at a high level. And then if we were to actually engage with the city related to an investigation, and then we were eventually to issue a report, there might be some result related to that at the end of the process. So when something might eventually come out, and that would be something we would work with you on.
It'd probably work with the legal counsel.
Yeah, but we, that could impair an investigation. So we have internal procedures around that as well.
Okay. So you already experienced this, because when I read this, it could be, you know, if it's not well managed, well implemented, it could go pretty wild. Okay?
Yeah, we administer these hotlines for more than a dozen cities. So we've got a team of folks that all participate in this.
So on the internal reports, audit reports, coming back to council, to the public, so it will say how many we see, but how many are not really, how's the report look like? That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so it will say the total number that were received in the last quarter, what the nature was, and, you know, we'll say, you know, let's say there were 10 reports. We can say, you know, six were not relevant, three were human resources matters, one is an ongoing investigation, for example, and was referred to the city attorney, something like that.
Okay, so the report doesn't have any NAMS, instance, whatever is in there. It's just a general report, like our accident reports and things like that. Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Next hand is raised from Councilmember Willie, then Vice Mayor Chow. Once we go through that cycle, and I do ask, if you can keep your questions relatively brief at this point, we can hopefully entertain a motion on this item. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, thank you. I kind of have similar type question, you know, pertaining to the hotline. By all means, you know, being able to identify things that, you know, need to be corrected, or, you know, whatever the severity is. I'm also of the mind, though, that doing as many things in-house as possible, like administering, you know, the 311 call line, as opposed to adding what appears to me, since I haven't been on the Audit Committee, but what appears to me being that we're essentially outsourcing another new function that ultimately is going to get added to the costs going forward. Am I correct in that?
No. So this is part of our budget line item in the basic internal audit services. It's always been part, it was part of our proposal to the city, and it's always been part of our plan for you. It's part of what we do for pretty much all of our clients. So it's already kind of built into our budget to administer this hotline. The only additional cost would be, as I mentioned, if there was a significant investigation that we were to undertake, we would do a separate engagement letter for that.
So historically, then, I'm not quite sure how to word this, you know. So historically, our contract and the amount, the cost to the city per year, and now, you know, this could have been covered historically, but never was. But going forward now, we're updating the municipal code, and so it is. So you're not increasing the cost because now you're doing this additional function that wasn't being done before? That's kind of the question?
The total, the total cost of our contract to the city is the same. We have an annual budget, and within that budget, we program a certain number of projects. Actually go through that in the next agenda item. Hopefully, we'll have time. And so this is part of that basic internal audit services line item. We have not proposed any additional budget for the answering of this hotline. No.
Great. Okay, so, sounds good. I mean, it seems like a prudent question to ask, and so, okay, sounds good. And then contracting it out versus doing it in-house kind of then just goes away. I'll leave it at that. So back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, and then we'll go to Councilmember Moore. I don't have follow-up questions at this point, or I don't have follow-up questions. And so Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, my question is similar. So the $5,000 only cover the hotline, and the assessment by Moss Adams and the quarterly report by Moss Adams would be covered by the current contract with Moss Adams. But you said that if there were in-depth investigation needed, there will be a separate contract that we sign to cover that investigation?
That's correct. So you would engage with the vendor to actually answer the hotline, and that's a separate vendor from us. And then, like any other internal auditor, if we have an investigation for fraud, if we have something outside of the scope of our internal audit work plan, then we would, then we would do a contract amendment for that.
That's fine. But I thought the engagement of Moss Adams and the city is only for a limited time. When we are done with the edit, maybe two years, then it's done, it's done. But it sounds like you are looking at a continuous contract with Cupertino for indefinite time.
So what we hope is that you have an internal audit function, whether it's us in-house or another vendor, because it's great to have internal audit. It's a best practice, and you get a lot of value out of it in economy efficiency effectiveness and controls. Whether or not you have internal audit, keeping up this hotline also gives a city a lot of value. So what our clients do is, in keeping with procurement best practices, they typically go out to bid every five to seven years for their internal auditor. Will, if you do go out to bid, will propose on that, and hopefully you'll select us again. If you don't select us, we'll transfer management of that hotline to the other vendor. Or if you decided to take internal audit in-house, you would transfer management to that internal auditor that you would hire. And we've absolutely done that transition before with other clients, and it's been, it's worked out well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And I did see a staff member with a hand raised, but that hand is down. Now, Councilmember Moore, we're now at the point where we can entertain a motion. Did you want to bring one forward?
Okay, so I do. The subject says, however, consider establishing a fraud, waste, and abuse program. So I'm wondering if I need to move that we establish the fraud, waste, and abuse program and conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 22-2243, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Municipal Code Section 2.88.100, Audit Committee duties, powers, and responsibilities. And I move that Ordinance Number 22-2243 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And so, fair point with regard to the potential dichotomy between the subject and the recommended action. Let me refer this to our city attorney, Chris. Is the recommended action something that folds in the first part of the subject where it states, consider establishing a fraud, waste, and abuse program?
So, you know, if council wishes to include that in the motion, I think it's fine. I think it'd be ratifying the program that's been developed by our internal auditor and our staff.
Okay. And so I'll confirm with Councilmember Moore, can we consider your motion to include that consideration of establishing a fraud, waste, and abuse program as described in the subject of this item? Yes, okay, good. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? And I see a hand raised from Councilmember Willie.
Second.
Very good. I only see a hand raised again from Councilmember Moore, but I take it, did you have a comment? Councilmember Way, you have a hand raised. Did you want to deliberate on this motion on the table?
I have a quick question to clarify the, one of the, okay, so can I answer my question?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, so, so when we talk about, you know, internal audit contract with Moss Adams, if it, you know, we can do an RFQ and ask another to do it, and then another suggestion is go internal. I will be very uncomfortable going internal. Is internal people going to listen to the phone numbers and do investigations? So I guess we can decide when it comes to that point. But to me, coming internal, it would be not good. It's of confidential issues in the phone calls and everything.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. I'll just make a brief comment. I think this is a great thing to have, honestly. It's precisely what I was hoping for when we initiated this process that has led us to Moss Adams today. And as Colleen points out, even if we don't go and proceed with Moss Adams two, three, four years out, this is an establishment of something that is very important to making sure that we have internal integrity and fiscal integrity. And I'll just give you the example of why we, you know, ultimately came to this point, which is where we should have been in the first place. If, for instance, right, our internal accountant, Jennifer Chang, between the years 2000 and 2014, had a colleague that had an awareness of what was happening, and just didn't feel very comfortable, you know, sharing that with people. If we had this hotline, then that person could have picked it up and said, hey, you know, I'm not really sure this is happening, but, you know, I think there might be some irregularity. Then that person could have done so in an anonymous fashion, and this is precisely the kind of thing that we could have well prevented. And I'm comfortable with the idea that there are, you know, mechanisms and safeties in check to preserve the anonymity, and there are probably some people that will be abusing the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline to a certain degree. But we have professionals here that are well aware of this. As Colleen points out, there tends to be a higher uptick in these types of calls when a hotline like this is rolled out. But I'm in full support of this motion on the table, and I think that it's a very wise practice for us to do, not just from a fiscal responsibility perspective, but really from a governance-based perspective. So I really appreciate all the effort that's gone into this, and all the very, like I said before, insightful comments on the item. So seeing no further hands raised, I'm going to go ahead and ask that our city clerk conduct a roll call vote on this motion. Oh, actually, Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 22-2243?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 22-2243, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Municipal Code Section 2.88.100, Audit Committee duties, powers, and responsibilities.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Could you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so here's the deal, folks. We have items 34, 35, and 36. And as much as I would love to get to item 34, which is consider approval of the fiscal year '22 to '23 internal audit program, I really don't think that we're going to get done with that in 19 minutes. However, I think we have a good shot of finishing 35 and 36. Now, let me ask a basic question of staff at this point. Is there an ability for us, because we don't have our regular meeting of August 2nd, we went ahead, and that was the first, this is the only meeting of the summer that we truly did designate as our break, would it be workable if we were to come back on August 16th and bring this into our regular agenda? Is that something that could proceed and hopefully move without a hitch in terms of our internal workings as well as this program?
Yes, I think that we would be able to bring that back on the 16th.
Okay, thank you, Diane. I really appreciate that, you know, feedback. Also from our, from our Moss Adams representatives, is, do you have a sense of whether that might be unworkable? It's a little less than a month out from July 19th is August 16th.
I am, I have another city's Audit Committee meeting that night, actually.
On August 16th, okay. So here's the other possibility, I think. We could potentially call a special meeting on August 2nd or somewhere between now and August 16th to cover this item. And so if my fellow members of City Council are okay with that, then I would like to table this for that special meeting. I was originally going to think about Thursday, but I know that there are scheduling issues later in the evening on Thursday. Wednesday is a little bit, you know, quick, but I think that we could probably coordinate with our relevant staff, which I think would be fairly streamlined, as well as Colleen. Hopefully, you have some availability between now and August 16th that can coincide with the other availabilities. Does that sound like something that's workable for everyone? If it's not, maybe a thumbs down or a shake of the head?
I think it would be preferable if Moss Adams could send someone else, if Colleen's not available, so that we can roll it into our meeting on the 16th.
On the 16th?
Yeah. Diane, we can, we could talk about maybe seeing who might be able to also attend in my stead to cover this one.
Okay.
That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. So let me ask one more question. So Colleen, if we, if we put this on the first meeting in September, is that something that would interfere with the agenda of the internal audit or anything? the, um, the agenda of the internal audit or, um, a- anything along those lines? Uh, and would you be available for, for that?
So, um, so the, the only piece of work here that's really time sensitive is the policy and procedure review. Staff is really chomping at the bit to have us have budget authority to review those policies and procedures so that they can get them approved and in place. Cause they really wanna get that moving. Um, so, you know, if we can get that done and approved, or your approval earlier, that would be great. Um, but all of our work is totally flexible in that regard and we can be flexible.
Got it. Okay. So let me, let me see if we can possibly do this. Chris, we have had a policy and procedures review item where I think we've really quite well fleshed out the various items, uh, and, and the sentiments from, from, from council. Could we perhaps carve out that piece of it and empower our, um, Moss Adams to go forward at this time in the interest of, uh, saving time?
Yeah. So for, so, uh, so I, I, this item doesn't actually give Moss Adam budget authority. I believe they already have that budget authority. So, so, you know, if, if, they and the city manager feel that they have enough direction to proceed with the work, there's nothing preventing them from proceeding with the work.
Okay, fair enough. Um, well, I guess that begs the question, um, for our acting city manager as well as Colleen, do you, do you feel like you have enough of that direction, um, from what you've heard so far up to this point, including this evening?
Based on tonight's discussion, I feel pretty comfortable with that one. Yeah.
Okay. Diane?
And I agree with that.
Okay, great. So let's try to do this. We're at about, um, fifteen minutes till the hour. Um, if, uh, council's okay with it, I'll go ahead and, uh, table item thirty-four and take a motion to, uh, that effect and move on to item thirty-five. Would anyone like to move? I see your head nodding, Councilmember Willie. Are you okay with that?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? I will look for either Zoom or I do see, uh, one hand raised, but that's not from Councilmember. Councilmember Wei, your hand is raised?
Second.
All right. Excellent. I don't see further hands raised unless Thomas, you'd like to speak to the item as a member of staff or quasi-public. And so I don't see any members of the public, um, you know, with their hands raised either. And so Madam City Clerk, could you take a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And we are on to item thirty-five, which is the consideration of accepting the monthly treasures report, uh, subcommittee's recommendation to include accounts payable reports with the monthly treasures report reviewed by the audit committee and accepting staff's recommendation to not include accounts receivable reports and checking account statements with the monthly treasures report. And so, um, our recommended actions are two, they're in alignment with that subject. Uh, Thomas, would you like to, uh, per the agenda, provide a, uh, hopefully succinct, uh, presentation and summary of this item?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today I'll be discussing the format of the monthly treasure support. As backup for this, in December, the Audit Committee brought state and city code provisions regarding monthly reporting to the staff's attention. At that time, staff was not compliant with government code section four-one-zero-zero-four, which requires monthly treasures supports of receipts, dispersments and fund outs. The city does now submit these reports to the Audit Committee and City Council, and the city is now complying with state and city code. In April twenty-twenty-two, City Council created a subcommittee to examine the monthly treasure support requirements. The subcommittee comprised Mayor Paul and Audit Committee Chair and Councilmember Moore. In May, the subcommittee met with city staff to discuss the recommendations, which included adding accounts payable, accounts receivable and account statements to the monthly treasures report. And so if City Council approves the recommendation, staff will submit the accounts payable reports with monthly treasure supports for the Audit Committee's review moving forward. After the accounts payable reports are reviewed by the Audit Committee, they would, they would then be reviewed by City Council. And due to the additional review, City Council's review would move to a later meeting as outlined in the staff report. With regards to the accounts receivable reports, staff does not recommend including these reports. After researching neighboring jurisdictions, staff found that no other agency provides accounts receivable reports in their treasure supports. And lastly, government code section four-one-zero-zero-four does not require these supports. In addition, regarding account statements, after discussion of the city's bank, staff does not recommend including checking account statements. City's bank advised against including checking account statements because doing so may increase risk to the city as well as any government agencies, businesses or residents that engage in financial transactions of the city. These account statements provide additional financial information that may be used to impersonate a business or individual. And so after researching neighboring jurisdictions, staff found no other agency provides checking account statements. In addition, government code section four-one-zero-zero-four does not require these reports. However, if individual city council members do request checking account statements, they can be provided on an individual basis. In addition, investment account statements and reports will continue to be provided with their monthly treasure support through government code section five-three-six-zero-seven. And so staff's recommendation was described earlier, and so staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Thomas. Um, let me just try to do a really quick clarification of information because it's, uh, rather late. So does that go for accounts receivable as well? If any member of the council would like to see those, staff is willing to show those to, uh, council members, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so let me go to our members of the public. I don't see any hands raised. Um, Madam City Clerk, did anyone send you an email or, um, do we have any blue cards on this item?
No, Mayor, there are no emails and no blue, blue cards.
Okay. And so still no hands raised from the public. Let me take this back to council. Um, would anyone like to, uh, ask any questions of staff on this item? And I see, um, Councilmember Moore, you are indicating from the dais. And Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised as well. Councilmember Moore?
Okay. So Thomas, just to clarify, on, um, uh, next Monday's meeting, we will be receiving, um, these, um, accounts payable reports for the previous month. And then in moving forward, it's going, they, they will then go to city council. So we'll still be receiving the accounts payable. And it'll be, um, as I understand, it'll be more organized because it'll be by the, by the complete month. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And if City Council does approve this motion, then, then the reports will be provided at the Audit Committee meeting on Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Just, just a, a quick reminder, uh, Thomas, there's no motion on the table yet, but, uh, I guess the recommended motion is, uh, or recommended action, I should, I should say. Uh, Councilmember Wei, do you have a, a hopefully brief question?
Yes, a very brief question. So, um, when this is accepted and approved, then we will not be receiving the weekly account payables. We will receive a monthly account payable. Is that my understanding?
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the city council would receive the accounts payables, uh, grouped as a month. So they may still be separated by week, but you would receive them for an entire month at a time.
But we'll still receive the weekly ones, like the ones we, um, post point, you know, put it out today. The, are those gonna be in there still?
So we would still format them, you know, as weekly reports, but you would get them in a batch. So like one month at a time.
Oh, sorry. I'm a little confused. Cause week and months don't really, you know, match sometimes. So are we gonna weekly or the, or the month? Or both?
So you would receive, uh, weekly, uh, like, let's say four or five weekly, uh, reports that would cover the entire month.
Okay. So it's still a weekly report. It's covered the whole month's timeline. I get it. Okay, okay. Got it. Thank you.
It's basically, we're, we're receiving them on a timely basis, you know, by month because sometimes we don't receive them for, you know, a number of weeks after the month. Um, it's, okay. So Vice Mayor Chow?
So I think last time we also requested to post this on a website so it's easily accessible by the public. So they don't have to go into each city council meeting to access those. So will, do we, do you plan to still post them?
So this was described in the staff report, but after discussing with our IT department and also, uh, researching other cities. So any accounts payable or accounts receivable or account statements, we would do not recommend posting those on the city's website. But in terms of the staff reports themselves, those could be provided on the city's website. And the reason we do make any of the accounts payable or accounts receivable statements on the city's website is that it would make it easier for malicious actors to harvest all the data when, when it's more easily accessible.
But I mean, it's posted on the council agenda, right?
Yes.
So all you need is just to pu-point to the city council agenda, which is already public.
Yes. So we can do that. We can, we can provide a link to the agenda.
Yeah.
That would be.
Maybe.
That would make it possible to gather the data than if we just, let's say, posted all the PDFs on the website directly.
Yeah, just a point to the council agenda would be sufficient.
Great. All right. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Um, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Did you want to bring a motion on this?
Um, wanted to move the recommended action.
Okay. Councilmember Moore moves the recommended action. Would anyone like to second? And Vice Mayor Chow, well, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still raised and you'll second? Okay, great. Okay. So recommended action does not include any ordinance. And so let me go ahead and, uh, call for a vote because there are no hands raised at this point. Um, Madam City Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And now we are on to the last item, uh, that's enumerated on our agenda. The subject is to consider selection of council members to serve on the city hall project committee. And the presenter here is our city clerk, Kirsten Squorsha.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, council, uh, approved the formation of this subcommittee on May seventeen. And so staff is bringing it back because, um, council did not actually make appointments yet.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's very, uh, brief and succinct and right to the point. So let's, um, bring this to members of the public. I don't see any hands raised. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or emails on this item?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. And so, um, I, I will provide that grace period of a minute or two for any members of the public that do want to, uh, speak. But, uh, in the meantime, we'll go forward, uh, to bring this back to the diocese council. Um, did anybody want to ask any questions or suggest, uh, subcommittee members? I would like to suggest that I'm not on this, uh, since I, you know, do have a limited shelf life. Um, but, uh, I see Councilmember Wei has a hand raised. Um, and, uh, Councilmember Wei, let's, let's go with you first.
Yes, I actually would like to suggest myself. I'm very interested in this topic and I have extensive experience on my eleven years of school board. We have extensive remodeling of all five high schools. I'm very familiar with buildings, contracts, you know, interior, exterior, research. So I am very interested to be in this, um, subcommittee.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Let's go to Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember Moore, who also have a hand raised. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah. So mine is, uh, I think just, uh, putting out some comments, kinda hopefully, uh, putting things what I consider to be in perspective, a little bit of history there. So, uh, when Vice Mayor Chow and I, uh, first got on the city council and Public Works brought the, uh, city hall replacement and the library expansion as a bundled project. And that night, we said, no, they shouldn't have been bundled and, uh, tackled the, uh, library expansion and then gave direction, um, or I should say more, uh, in the way of comments. Wait a minute. What, replacing city hall? Where is the ongoing process that showed us the options and, uh, explained pros and cons?
I hate to cut you off, Councilmember Willie, but we're at eleven fifty-seven. We've got three more minutes. So if you could encapsulate, otherwise we'll go ahead and continue this item.
So the, the point of this being that, uh, you know, Public Works again brought it to us, again, without really the, the, uh, expected flow so that the city council understood what the options were, why some would be preferred over the others. And the subcommittee hopefully will take that message back so that the, the, uh, city hall project, seismic upgrade, needing more space, what are the parking ramifications, things of that nature, in a way that the city council gets to, uh, give direction along the way rather than all that goes ahead and comes with us with, here's the final product, here's what it's gonna cost.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Appreciate it. I, I'm sorry to cut you off. And, uh, if we need more discussion and deliberation on this, then we will continue this to our August sixteenth meeting. Councilmember Moore, do you have a, a comment on this?
Um, yeah, we might have to, to continue it. Um, I, I would actually like to serve and I would like to serve with Councilmember Willie on this, um, subcommittee.
Okay. Um, so there is a couple of comments. Um, and so, um, I don't know if we can get to resolution in a minute or less. So let me, let me do this, um, in, in an effort to be, um, you know, kind of fully, uh, fully vetted on this. Uh, let's go ahead and continue this item to August sixteenth. I, I don't think, um, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to make a very brief comment before?
I want, I'd like to make a motion. I don't want to delay that. We don't have time to delay.
Oh, what is your motion, Vice Mayor?
I would like to, uh, move to, for, uh, Councilmember Moore and the Councilmember Willie to serve as the subcommittee.
Okay.
They will start meeting right away.
I will entertain a second on that motion if there is one forthcoming. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Councilmember Moore, did you want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, we do have a motion and a second on the table. It's, it's midnight. Um, unless there's comment on this, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion. Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised.
I do have a comment. If you talk about experience of buildings and constructions, design and everything, I don't think anybody on this council has more experience than I have. Okay. The second is, I would like to ask a question. How many subcommittees Councilmember Moore is on? I mean, we need to, I mean, we have five, council of five. And I do believe the job needs to be spread out among the five of us. And I'm not saying that Councilmember Moore is not qualified. I'm just saying that she is on almost every, almost every subcommittee. And I have an issue with that. And to consider, really, if you wanna know who has more experience in contracting, in business, in designing, in seeing new buildings, old buildings, in doing this design and then work on, um, you know, design build and everything, I, I do think I'm very, very qualified.
Okay. Well, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. Um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question at this point. Um, and so, um, without seeing any, uh, further objections to that, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call for, for a vote. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. Did you want to, uh, second my request to call the question?
I hope to make a short comment on why I make my motion.
You, you know, just in the interest of, uh, time, Council Vice Mayor Chow, it is twelve oh one AM. I would like to, if, 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 uh, we don't, uh, vote at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and continue this to August sixteen.
Um, let's vote.
Okay. Uh, so you'll second my calling of the question, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, uh, Madam City Clerk, could you take a vote on the calling of the question?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with way voting no.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Uh, please conduct a roll call vote on the underlying motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with way voting no.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And, uh, with apologies, uh, with regard to the, uh, remainder, which is council and staff comments and future agenda items, we will go ahead and, uh, hold those over for August sixteenth. We do have a, a, a full suite of, uh, items that we are considering and, and bouncing out in previous, uh, uh, pre- previous meetings. And so, uh, individual council members, if you have, uh, concerns, feel free to send them to our, uh, acting city manager, Diane Thompson. And, uh, we do meet on a weekly basis, uh, tomorrow at, uh, one-thirty PM. And so, uh, I'm sure that we can, you know, talk, uh, through that channel in terms of, um, any reminders, uh, for instance, as to the pending requests for future agenda items. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Um, it's been, um, a, a really actually quite effective meeting. We had a very full agenda. Um, and so we wish you a wonderful rest of your July. We are, uh, formally in a bit of a summer break in Cupertino for a, uh, regular meeting schedule. August second again is, uh, is, is canceled in Cupertino. And so, um, without further ado, we will see you on August sixteenth for our next regularly scheduled city council meeting of the city of Cupertino. Have a great night and meeting is adjourned.